Superintendent Mike.
Hello.
Assistant Superintendents Gerald, Tim, Paletta, Giovanna, Joan, and all those in the audience, thank you for being here. Roll call Joan.
Charles Long.
Here.
Chris Mortensen. Can you hear me? Can you hear it?
Yeah.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manulito.
President.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Thank you Joan, we do have four members in attendance, we do have a quorum, so let's start our meeting at this point. Pleasure to be here, it's Kevin. Thank you Board Members. Let's go down to item number two, approval of the agenda for today's meeting.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
My second.
Okay, motions been made by Michael Shaw and second by Priscilla Manulito to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Roll call Joan.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Manulito.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Thank you Board Members. We do have an agenda for today's meeting, let's go down to item number three. We have two meeting minutes to consider and approve. Meeting minutes A, March 30, 2020, what is the pleasure of the Board?
I would like to make a motion, we approve the minutes of March 30th, 2020.
Okay, motions been made by Michael Shaw and second by Kevin Mitchell.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Could I request to combine the two sir, since we already reviewed both of them?
I think if we keep it one time, you know, one after another, it'd be a lot better. I think we've always done that, so. Sorry. Roll call Joan.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Manulito.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Thank you Board Members, let's go down to meeting minutes B, April 8th, 2020, special meeting, Board Members.
I would like to make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 8th, 2020, special meeting.
Okay, motions been made by Michael Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Mitchell, roll call Joan.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Manulito.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Thank you Board Members, we approve the meeting minutes for two meetings. Let's go down to item four, approval of consent agenda items, Board Members.
I would like to make a motion, we approve of consent agenda items four A and four B.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Kevin Mitchell's second. Roll call Joan.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Manulito.
I have a question on this, is this Mr. Hyatt? One of the action items that we continuously do every school year?
Which, Ms. Manulito, which one are you referring to?
The consent item agenda, B, four B.
It is, we do this every year, there's obviously some modifications this year due to the school closure. And I can have Dr. Ryan and Mr. Horasik speak about that during the reports or now?
Can we do it now before we vote sir?
Sure.
I apologize, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We heard you before too, so.
I have a good teacher voice. We, due to this current situation with the pandemic of COVID-19, we are asking that the Board approve an option of an alternative demonstration of competency for seniors to graduate this year, and what that would be, in addition to the other local accepted ADCs, this would be the acceptance of students completing the packet that school sites have sent to those students. So this would be completing the packet for English, math, science, and social studies successfully, and that would be an option for them to graduate.
So it's essentially just an added option?
Yes, it's an added option to the list of already accepted local ADCs.
So this is, we're kind of tweeting our Board policy to include this in there, and any future issues that we may have, God forbid, not another, or continuing this pandemic, that would help alleviate or give us this option again.
Mr. Long, members of the Board, it's not a Board policy, because it changes by state regulation. So, I mean essentially it's a semi pseudo policy that you're approving for the COVID-19, it's not a part of Board policy as far as being a part of our policies like it was for the pandemic policy that you approved a few weeks ago. Every year you approve ADCs, and we're just submitting this to the state to fulfill that requirement if you so choose, just to make it a little bit easier. Like, we don't have it in Board policy that you have to follow all these different things with respect to the ADCs.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking, because that's the first sentence that says that. This action is included in the Board policy, so I don't know if that means that it's in, we're doing this as a form of action that we need to take as a policy of ours that we do this?
No.
Or is it into our policy?
It's not a part, it's within the policy that you guys approve ADCs, but we're just stating that this is one of the ways in which we're going to allow students to approve it. It's not, it doesn't need to be written into policy, it just needs to be disclosed that we're allowing this per the Board, one of the ways that we can go through the ADC.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay. So, roll call Joan, we do have a motion on the floor.
Ms. Manulito.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Okay, we approve the consent agenda items. Let's go down to item number five, study circle. Study circle A, Mike.
Present, Long, members of the Board, we have several short presentations on different topics that were requested by you, and I'm going to kind of lay out, and if those people in the audience would come up and just spend a few minutes on each topic. We have several people in the audience that will be sharing today. First, I'd like Mr. Horasik just to give a quick update on distance learning and where we're at with that. After following Mr. Horasik, we'll have Mr. Oberheim, which is, who is the Director of Special Education. He'll give an update on special education, distance learning, along with some gifted and talented improvements that we're making for next year. Followed by Mr. Oberheim, we will have Dr. Paletta White, and she'll do an overview of mental health services and other support services for students during COVID-19.
So on the distance learning packets as of today, everything will be out the door. The last part to go out were English Language Arts, is that right? English Language Arts for seventh and eighth grade. We ran into some printing issues, obviously we've been printing for about three weeks, and so a couple of them had some issues, we had to have them repaired, so all packets now are out as of today, they'll be in the mail, K through 12, so that includes credit recovery, that includes all high school packets. There are instructions within the packets on how to do them and how they should be paced out each day. The parents have also received information on who to contact if they have questions about how to do the packets or the work, and we're referring them to the school sites, and then the school sites can contact that individual student's teacher, they can get in contact to provide some support for the students. And we also, for all nine through 12 students, we put a return, nine by 12 or nine and a half by 12, whatever size that envelope is, so that they can complete the work and it's already addressed to come back to the school, and so they can turn their work in that way, and then the school and the teachers from the schools will grade that. Credit recovery is coming directly back to central office, so we're the ones taking care of any student who needs credit recovery through the packets. Any questions on distance learning?
I could add one piece, Mr. Horasik, just before there's questions. I also wanted to note that there was some delay in getting booklets out to students. We were working with a company called Scholastic, who fell through on their commitment, for whatever reason during this time, to get us the booklets, and so we had a backup plan to print those packets for students. And so we'll reconsider our business with that entity in the future, given their lack of commitment to fulfilling their obligation that we agreed to. But I just want to make sure that was known, that there was some delay due to a company not shipping the supplies to us.
Board Members, questions?
Yes, Mr. Long, thank you. I thought, no, just kidding, one of the things I wanted to ask, a couple of things I wanted to ask, if our students are having difficulties with their learning packets and need to reach out to their teachers, how are you instructing the students to do that? Is there a protocol, is there a system? I know we were told at one time as a Board that we weren't really encouraging our teachers to reach out to the students individually. So how are we mandating in protocol and guidelines on how students can do that sir? That's my first question. Second question is, I know there's several grants that are out through the New Mexico PED to help our students with technology. What are we doing in the areas for our rural area students that may not have a laptop? We heard APS getting, oh my gosh, I think it was 800 laptops or something, there was a huge number. Oh yeah, a thousand, I don't remember, it's a huge number of laptops. And I know we did that for McKinley County students, and even if we have to go down to tablets, what are we doing, are we applying for these grants to help utilize laptops, tablets, hotspots, to get these into the hands of our children? That's my last question. Thank you Mr. Long and staff.
Now, Mr. Horasik, if you could repeat for the first question, what you just talked about with respect to the information sent out to parents, I think that answers the first question, and then we'll talk about the second one.
Yes, so we have sent a text message to all parents notifying them that they can contact their child's school, and then that, the school will get them in contact with the teacher. The protocols are that the principals will organize that with their teachers, where a teacher could come into the school to reach out to the student if support is needed. And we are also going to put that same information on our website starting Thursday. We don't want to put it today because the last of the packets went out, and if we put it up today, we might have, you know, 300 people call today saying, "I don't have my packet," when it really might be in the mail, and so we're going to put that up on Thursday. So we've already sent the text message out, and then the flyer that Giovanna's department is creating will be up on Thursday, and it will basically explain that to them, and then it'll have every single principal's school phone number and the principal's email address. And even if we, we're getting a few, very few, but we've got a few emails here asking questions, and so we're just directing those to the school sites to make sure they contact that particular parent. But I will say that we've had very few of those types of calls at this point.
I believe also on the high school packets, the phone numbers were also placed on those packets, because that information that the students complete, for those packets that the students complete, can be returned, and I believe we put all the phone numbers on those packets.
So the nine through 12 letter that went out a few weeks ago, part of that letter on the backside was every principal at the nine through 12, their contact information, including their email and the school site phone number, yes, because those are going to be for credit. That's correct.
Does that answer the first question, Ms. Manulito?
I have a follow-up, but go ahead.
The second question has to do with technology, and we've had conversations about this regarding the disparity in funding. Most districts across the state of New Mexico are using bonding capacity, they're also using interest off their capital accounts because they have so much excess capital, and there's also some private donations from individuals that are donating computers. That's the predominant source of technology that's coming into districts. In addition to that, districts already had that capital, already had a vast amount of technology that they could deliver out to students. In Galton McKinley County Schools, as you know, it's a different, we're treated differently with respect to capital dollars, and so while we have several different laptops that we're able to give out to students, it's not enough to cover the entire district. And so currently, we have dual credit students that have a laptop, that we're able to get enough laptops together for dual credit students. Also for credit recovery, we put together enough laptops to service all of our credit recovery students in the county. We also expanded wireless at school sites to provide access. One of the biggest problems, as you know, is that the infrastructure in our rural areas isn't to the extent, nor is some of the economic situations our families to actually purchase the internet or the devices, and so again, that's why we created packets for equity across the district. If we just gave computers to some and not others, then that would not be equitable.
May I jump in on one thing on the credit recovery piece? We've actually had students in rural areas that have said, "We can't get internet at our house, so please send me, even though I have a laptop, please send me a packet."
Right, so we give options on that, just to make sure that students do have access. In addition, there are several different grants that are coming about, I know that they're still putting some of that information out to apply, but we have on our own reached out to the Speaker's Office, Representative Stapleton, to ask, and actually our lobbyists have asked other districts, "Where did you get the money and who provided these laptops to you?" But we did reach out to the Speaker's Office to see if they could help us secure laptops for our students. I have not received word back on any progress on that particular area, but we'll reach out again. In addition to that, we had a conversation with the Public Education Department regarding hotspots, which would give access, once we have a device, it would help give access to those students who don't currently have access, and they said that they are looking to get a reduced rate from a cell service provider for those hotspots, and that they would sell them to us at a reduced rate. The time it's going to take to get that in place is going to be past the school year, just like any other technology purchase. We have already sought out to purchase laptops for middle school students for next year as part of that initiative. The delay just to get technologies, especially when it's coming out of China, is problematic, as lots of shipping across the country is problematic, but especially when it comes to technology, since some of those things come from overseas. So, we know that there is going to be some funds released to the state that we are hoping to be able to apply for. We are utilizing, as you saw in our press release, explaining once again, after we've done multiple times for multiple years, to legislators, the state, the governor's office, that our students don't receive equitable funding compared to other districts, that we are expressing and asking for people's attention to this matter, since it's very illuminated during this time that our students don't have the technology that other students have. And so I even heard a local legislator, a senator, mention something that was false, and so this is how false rumors get spread around, that in-town students have laptops and out-of-town students don't. That's absolutely false, inaccurate, and it's unfortunate that that particular person took it upon themselves to make a statement without even contacting the district to see if it was even true. It's not true. And that was one of the reasons we went to packets, to make sure that it was equitable. So if there's any further questions?
Priscilla.
Yes, thank you Mr. Long. I know that you guys always tell us that there's emails going out to our local chapter house, especially important information like this flyer that will be coming out again on this, on the help, if students need help. Could I ask if you guys can include us in those emails, because there's a disconnect that's happening with our chapters? I say one thing, and I said, "Well, I thought that was emailed to you," and then they said, "No, we haven't received that information." So, I think it's better, we know as Board Members, especially the ones in the rural areas, what is being generated to our chapters, so we know that yes, you did receive that information, or yes, you did receive that flyer. So I'm just requesting that, Mr. Long. The other thing is, I do sit on the Navajo Nation Board of Education, and there's a lot of stuff happening around technology pertaining to hotspots and E-Rate and partnerships through the nation on fiber optic, and trying to spread that into the rural areas, and I know that it was reported to us, there was about seven to eight hundred hotspots that were given to the nation through the Department of Education to be given out to a student. And I know they're working on like a, I don't know, it's a million dollar grant that would help start from Cuba area and start heading into like Herfano, Cronpoint area on fiber optic lines, and I'm just thankful that we need to continue to receive that information as a district to see what our children are really getting to, and they're going to be sharing those lines with cellular companies that off those hotspots. And all the cellular companies have been contacted to assist in that area. So I just wanted to kind of provide that information, that there are other entities that are trying to help our student body too, that we may be partners with. So thank you.
Yeah, any other questions? Kevin?
I just had a question on the packets. I was asked a question on if a student, because I know that, you know, like dual credit and college courses, of course, you know, you can go beyond your 4.0 GPA. And they're asking, well, if they have straight A's across the board already, do all their work and turn it in, and we're guaranteeing to move the grade up one, they said, is it going to, could that increase their GPA any higher, or does it just stay?
No, the grade point, grade point scale is the same, it hasn't changed. So dual credit AP courses is from up to five points, five point scale, all other courses are a four point scale. So if you have an A currently and you do the packet, the most you could do is increase your percentage on your grade up to 100%, whether you're on a four point or a five point scale.
Okay, so if they have like A's already and they have like 90, then they would be moved up to 100% across?
100%, right, it wouldn't be another grade level because there's no grade above A.
Thank you.
Ishi, any other questions, Board Members? Then yeah.
Thank you sir.
Yeah, I think it would be good, you know, we were given a plan as to how distant learning would be rolled out, might be good for us to revisit that. So, Ishi, that provides a lot of information on as to what's going to happen, how it's going to be done and all of that, but even then, I think you're going to, we're going to be facing questions that might not be on that plan, so just remember those, if you have a question, Gerald is always available, and other assistant superintendents are there to help us. Asha E. Hotawa. With that.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes.
I also wanted to say, and I really wanted to thank all the staff that are behind putting the packets together, getting them mailed out, getting the ones that are being returned, and having to contact the parents and the students, and I think they're doing a great job, and you know, I'm sure they're probably working harder than they ever worked before, you know, with these packets and stuff, but you know, I'm not too sure who's all involved in that, but you know, I want to say thank you to the ones that are mailing out these packets and getting them all delivered, thank you.
So just real quick, really appreciate that, Ashley's one of them, a couple of my directors of instruction, but also there's individuals from Giovanna's department and from my department that are behind the scenes, we have about eight a day, right, practicing our, you know, the social distancing and the processes and the procedures with gloves, etc. But I can assure you, in the last month, it's probably been the most stressful month for every one of those employees, because you're talking about sending out, it really wasn't 11,000 packets, it was probably about 15,000 or 16,000, maybe 17,000, because we had to send ELA and Mass separate, and they have been working non-stop every day, and then we have a really good system in place. If the packet or the letter is returned, our STARS team at State Reporting is doing a really good job of actually trying to figure out and contact those people when they came back to get an updated address, to send out the, so Mr. Mitchell, I really want to thank you for that, because the ones behind the scenes that are doing the work just is just, well, it's, there's a child at the end of that document, and we really talk about that every day, how just remember, this is really hard, tedious, monotonous, but there's a child who's going to benefit at the end, and they've just done a really good job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ishi, I think Board Members, when everything clears up, maybe we can do appreciation for all those that were involved in the rollout of distant learning and all that. We'll have a big powwow here. Gathering of the school district, or something, but anyway.
Thank you. Our next presenter is Mr. Oberheim, he will go over again, just a reminder, special education services and gifted and talented services.
Mr. Long, Mr. Hyatt, thank you. Board Members, thank you for letting me be here today. As you're aware, there's a continuous learning plan for the school district. In addition to that, special education has provided a supplemental learning plan for all of our students that are eligible for special education services. So I'm just going to give you a quick update and overview of what that looks like for us today. The federal government has maintained that we still have obligations to meet in terms of meeting IEP dates for annual IEPs as well as evaluation information, so we're working hard to get those things done as well today. In addition to our regular IEP schedules and evaluation schedules, with the COVID-19 crisis, we've had to develop individual academic and individual related service plans for all of the students receiving services in our district. So that's a little over 1,600 students, that we provided some additional supplemental materials in addition to what's been sent out for the regular education departments, so there's some extra work there. So, we added probably about 1,500 additional paper packets to what already went out to students, to be specific around their needs for IEPs at this point in time. To date, we've completed about 1,355 individual academic and related service plans, which is a pretty good number considering some of the limitations we have with some of the families we're dealing with. We've had 458 incompleted programs, but we're not giving up on those, we're still working on contacting families and kind of repeated contacts in multiple ways to get those done. We've completed from April 6th to today, 70 annual IEPs that were scheduled, so we're maintaining that schedule and kind of on track there, which is good.
How many? I'm sorry.
Seventy. And that's been in the last two weeks or so. And keep in mind, that's in addition to these extra individualized academic plans and individualized related service plans, so our special education folks are meeting upwards of 10 to 12 times a day with different family members and contacts, so they're quite busy, which is good. We've had 503 unsuccessful contacts with families, which means we couldn't contact them through email or phone calls, we're mailing out letters, some of those letters have been returned as well, but we're going to continue to pursue contact with those folks, just to make sure that we're trying to get students what they need in this short interim of the school closure. Some other things to be aware of is that we have C to B transitions, which are required to continue, that's our preschool students, our students turning three, we're required to do initial evaluation. Um, we're required to do initial evaluations for those, those children. There's about forty of those to be completed. We're on track and moving forward with those. As we qualify students for those services, um, we're developing packets, individualized packets for them and sending them home to the family as well. So we will be continuing, um, our process of providing supports as students are eligible through the end of the school year for that, that age group. Uh, in terms of generalized evaluations for our students, um, on the three-year reevaluation cycle, uh, we've moved to doing informal evaluations for the remainder of this year. Um, we probably only had about seventy of those left to do. Uh, we're, we're actually in really good shape. Um, my department's been great about keeping up with, uh, that cycle and maintaining compliance with, uh, meeting those annual due dates. So we're actually, the district's actually in really good shape in terms of finishing out the school year and making sure that students have what they need in terms of paperwork. If we do identify that there's a student that we feel needs more formal evaluation, um, we're putting that into our prior written notice with the families. And then we're building a schedule for the beginning of the next school year to make sure that formal testing takes place. Um, and we're doing that student justice in terms of identifying what their specific needs are. Um, K through twelve initial evaluations, currently we have, um, three that are on tap. So parents, um, have agreed to wait until the beginning of the twenty twenty-one school year to get that formal evaluation done. We're doing some informal evaluation pieces of that. Uh, but to do it justice, we need to be able to have contact with students, um, to, to, uh, provide them an accurate measure of what their abilities are. Um, in the meantime, we are agreeing to providing services and supplemental supports for those students, uh, through the end of this school year to make sure that they're, um, at least getting some attention and contact from special education staff. We also have three students that'll be turning ten years old that are identified as developmentally disabled. Um, so we, uh, at the age of ten, we have to make a determination on a specific exceptionality. So we're, uh, doing some informal assessments with those kids. And then again, if we need to reassess later in the twenty twenty-one school year, um, we'll put them on there. But overall, there's six students with initial evaluations, um, that we, uh, have a little bit of a challenge in terms of remote learning types of access, um, that we're going to provide some supports to. Um, just to be aware, nursing services are continuing with moving toward an electronic health card database. And they still have the obligation of maintaining immunization records with our students. So they've had some contacts with the schools and, uh, principals to get that information, um, and make contact with parents. Um, overall, we're looking in pretty good shape in terms of, uh, providing services. So special education teachers are also required to provide office hours, scheduled office hours, so that their students can call in or, um, participate through a Zoom meeting to get, uh, additional supports. But again, most of our supports are paper-based, um, in order to provide equity around, around the district for the student populations that wouldn't have access to that technology. Um, the other methodologies we're using are phone, um, call-ins and, uh, Google Classroom, different things that they can, um, access depending on their level of technology in the home. Are there any questions about special education before I move into?
Questions, board members?
Um, I just have one, Mr. Long. Um, how are we adapting and meeting the needs of our children's IEPs on OTPT and speech therapy?
So each of those related service categories is obligated to provide an individualized service plan. So along with the academic plan that the teachers are doing, the related service folks are coming in behind that, um, making contact with the families and students and developing a plan that they can implement at the home. So we've provided paper packets and suggestions for lessons for, um, families to be able to execute. But we realize that, that parents aren't, um, licensed therapists or, um, certified to do some of those things. So we've tried to make them as, um, simple and, um, easy to implement at the home with the support of the related service providers as well. Uh, so there's weekly contact from all of our related service providers to students. Um, it's actually through, through the parents. Uh, we're not doing direct contact with, with students. Um, it's all through, done through the adults, um, just to ensure safety and that things are done appropriately.
So, Ms., Mr. Hyatt and Sir, on, if, I know that IEPs are legal documents, that we have to provide those services for our students. And if we're doing them and asking our parents to do them with their children and just giving them lesson plans that they can do, is that, oh, is there, oh, is there, hmm, how can I say? Um, are we supposed to be alternating or updating, um, implementing language into their IEP plans to indicate that? Um, and has, um, because if we're saying that in the IP that we're providing that services X amount of time a month or a week, and that's not fulfilled, um, I know that we could get different lawsuits on us. So how are we changing the IEPs to adapt to what is happening nationwide with the virus? Thank you.
So there, there are two parts to this. One is with an annual IEP, we're conferring, um, we're creating plans to confer benefit to a student as if they were attending school. So that once we do resume school, those services kick in and we roll, um, right into that service provision straight away. The individual academic plans and individual, um, service plans, related service plans, are to cover the time, um, that we've been out of school for this extended period due to the restrictions of, of not having contact with, with students. Um, and there's a prior written notice, uh, which provides parents' written consent, um, to agree to those services within this, this short timeframe. Um, so we're talking about, about a two-month period. We're providing, um, not exactly what their regular IEP would state, but it's an individualized plan that they can execute at home. And that's with supports. That's with our related service and our special education teacher supports as well.
You have any other questions, board members? Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right, so I also have some information on, on gifted and talented education, um, that I want to share, uh, this afternoon as well. So, uh, we've taken a look at, um, our current state of being with gifted and talented and decided that there needs to be some restructuring and kind of an overhaul with the program. Um, we really feel like we want to try to provide some equitable service, uh, throughout the district. So that students that are in county schools are getting, um, a similar or the same approach to students that would be in town schools, um, or that are larger environments. So smaller schools to larger schools, um, sometimes the resources are a little bit different. We're trying to provide some equity in the way that we're going to approach that. So we're moving to, um, to a system that's going to identify four specific areas of service for our gifted students, um, in the, the coming year. Uh, it's going to involve case management, which is IEP development, um, schedule planning, and direct contact with students around their specific areas of, of giftedness. Uh, it involves, uh, more robust consultation methodology with our regular education programs so that general education teachers know how to accelerate and enrich, um, environments for gifted students within their own classrooms. Uh, so there'll be some partnering between gifted educators as well as general education teachers. Um, we're developing a peer mentoring program, which is something that is part of, um, an expectation that we have within the district that needs to be fleshed out a little bit. We want to create an environment where there's, um, some collegiality with our student groups so that they have the ability to kind of, um, know how to work through problematic things uh, as a, as a gifted student. Um, and in addition to that, we're doing talent development at the middle school and high schools. That's going to pair really nicely with our Elevate twenty twenty-two plan in terms of career and college readiness. So there'll be some interest development and, um, focus on career and development, career and, and college development, um, around areas of giftedness for those, those student populations. Uh, we've developed some minimum contact times for those students. Um, but again, this is something we want to individualize for, for our children to make sure we're meeting their needs. Um, but we have some baseline numbers that we're going to promote to our teaching staff. Um, with that, we're kind of refining what we're doing in terms of approach. Um, gifted and talented teachers will now work out of my department specifically, uh, and will be housed at our, our office building and deployed much like a related service, um, unit. So they're going to be assigned caseloads that they'll have multiple schools to address, uh, depending on the number of students that they would service. And, um, we're really looking at utilizing teacher's strengths and I, areas that they are certified in to provide that support and promote that integration into the general education populations. Um, a big piece of this is working with the general education, um, curriculum department, curriculum instruction department in expanding our, our advanced placement, our honors and our dual credit opportunities and, and offerings for those students and being creative in how those students access that information. Is there anything else specific that you wanted me to address?
No, I just wanted to, it's been extremely complex to figure out how to provide special education services in this environment. And, uh, I just want to express my appreciation to John and his efforts with his team, uh, what they've been able to accomplish and how fast they were able to put the plan together that met the guidelines of the federal government has been remarkable. Um, and that also extends also to the, anything to do with distance learning has been very complex. And so I appreciate the efforts from staff here at Central Office and also teachers across the district that have been, um, figuring this out. We've been doing it together. Uh, but we appreciate the public education department also, I believe, was on Friday, uh, Mr. Huresek, if you can, was it Friday that Dr. Warniment said that we have an excellent plan? And appreciated our work here at the district. So, uh, we appreciate that support from the Mexico Public Education Department as we work through this.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, board members. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I want to thank Terry and Ashley too. And then of course, our reporter from Gallup Independent. Thank you for being here, sir.
Um, the last presentation, um, is Dr. White. And as I mentioned, she's going to talk a little bit about, um, mental health and other services to students, along with Dr. White, if you would touch on distance learning with respect to ELL.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, uh, Mr. Long, members of the board. First, on ELL packets, as we're on, um, learning packets. Right now, we're working with, um, the state as far as the remaining, my, remaining funds to order ELL packets. These will be individualized learning packets for our ELL students. So we're in the final stages of approval. And once we get that done, we're going to process it and send those out to our students as well. So our students are getting the supports that they need for, uh, if they are identified as English Language Learners, ELL. For, uh, mental health, we have a process in place for our counselors. Um, we set protocol to the counselors first. Um, if a parent or a student calls the principal, the principal then in turn will call the counselor who will provide the appropriate services that the students need through phone calls. And there's also a referral to outside agencies if they need to. There's a list of mental health providers that are updated. A lot of our mental health providers are not taking, taking physical walk-ins, but they, they're, they are doing teletherapy, they are doing online, follow through the phone kind of services. So they're, our kids are getting the supports that they need. For our students who are in crises, it's a, it's almost the same process, but only instead of calling the, the counselor for the school site, the principal, if, if the principal gets a call that a student is in crisis, the principal will call the appropriate crisis team member that's assigned to the area. Ms. Lyndon Meyer, the coordinator for the counseling services, has done a very good job of training key people in every community. So each community has a highly trained person within their counseling area who is trained in responding to crisis modes, whether it be suicide, death, or anything like that. So the person in this particular case will be called in their community and that, that person will be, um, providing the services for that student and/or parent. So that's our protocol for as far as keeping our kids, um, safe as far as mentally or as safe as we can under the circumstances. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Um, thank you, Mr. Long. Yeah, ha, um, I guess, um, shut it. Um, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the flyer that went out from here on that information. Um, I've been distributing that to our, our local, um, communities, um, and chapter members just for them to have on hand. And I think it was a wonderful flyer that was generated, so I can have for that. Uh, the second thing is we received a report to this morning. Um, and I don't know how it is, this was from the Navajo Nation PD, um, that the, there's an increase in child abuse, um, child rape, child molestation, um, due to our children being home. You know, it's heartbreaking that people are taking advantage of that at this point. Um, but just for, I don't know how it is, McKinley County State Police, anything like that, but, um, basin ne, I'm worried about, you know, our children that are home. And I think somewhere we need to be prepared, um, with that at counseling when school does resume. Um, because I know that, ah, we will have those stories, um, that will affect our community, um, in our school district. So just FYI sake for, for you and for our superintendent, um, here, that is something that, um, was reported and I'm, I'm really concerned about, is those increases and how mentally that's going to affect some of our children. Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paleta. Yeah. Don't yeah, board members?
Next item?
Next item?
Um, we have, doc, or, you're not doctor yet, but Mr. Long, uh, members of the board. Uh, like Javana Hanks is going to get up and we're going to give a, just an overview of the federal impact aid ruling that, uh, was made, we, the way we see it, in our, our favor and students across the state, uh, districts across the state that receive impact aid. And so we want to give you a little bit of an overview of that, um, along with some of the additional information that we've, we've gathered as, as we've dove into this document. Um, as you know, although the majority of the news obviously revolves around COVID nineteen, which we need to have that kind of news, but there's starting to be a growing, growing articles, I guess you could say, across not only the state but also the nation with respect to impact aid. We have done our best, the board has done their best. Uh, we've collaborated with lots of different entities, tribal entities, city, county, state, other legislators who have worked very hard trying to educate the state on the disparity with respect to impact aid. Uh, and so it is refreshing, uh, to hear the feds come back and rule in so many ways in our favor, um, showing that there is a problem in New Mexico. Unfortunately for New Mexico, this comes at a time with a lot, a loss of revenue due to oil and gas. Unfortunately, that was a decision by the state legislature at one point in time when they took property tax out of the funding for education predominantly and decided that oil would be a more reliable resource. I think those individuals, some I think are still around, um, definitely have been proven to be wrong in that because of the volatility of oil. So I'm going to have Javana just briefly go over some of the things that we have discovered with respect to this particular ruling, um, and how we, uh, we'll move forward maybe some, and we'll talk a little bit about how we, how we move forward with this, with this ruling and what potentially could happen with this ruling.
Mr. Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members of the audience. For those of you who've received the ruling recently, it basically states that the, um, the state will not be able to take impact aid from July first, twenty nineteen to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Please know that this is a ruling based on a year-by-year case as the state applies for equalization. I am going to speak in general about some key components. This is a exceptionally complex issue, um, but I, I want to keep it as clear as I possibly can because I do know that one of the things that we run into is that people will, um, make things out to be different than what they are, whether that's through commission or omission by using a lot of, uh, technical language. So, um, there are essentially four methodologies for running equalization that are allowed. The state chooses one based upon revenue. Um, and what we found in analyzing the state's, um, submission to the federal government was that they were not actually including all eligible revenue in that calculation that they were submitting to the federal government. And so one of the things that we brought forward to the federal government was an analysis of everything that could be considered state aid, which is what the federal term is for the revenues that should be considered. And of that, there are two qualifiers, is that it is used for current expenditures, which essentially means non-capital outlay funding. And it is not required to be repaid. So when you think about the funding sources in the state of New Mexico, we're not just talking about the state equalization guarantee that many people talk about. We're talking about multiple sources of- We're talking about multiple sources of funds that are not being included in that calculation going to the federal government. Now, in addition to that, there are other local revenues which are tax-based, which were not being credited and not being included in the calculation. So we also ask the federal government to review those. Of those funds, the federal government did state that yes, those funds should have been included into the calculation. One of those that is very important, I think, to highlight is the two-mil levy. Now, we've talked about the two-mil levy here before. It is, in the way that it's written statutorily, something that can be used for both current expenditures, things like maintenance and repairs, and capital outlay. As such, those funds should have been included in the disparity analysis. And so this is very key. When thinking about impact aid and the funds that actually come into our district, they've been taking 75% credit of that impact aid. They should have also been taking credit for 75% of those two mil, which is about $118 million statewide that the state has not been taking credit for. So that's a very key component to think about, that should the state become equalized again in the future, they will have to take credit for those funds as well statewide for that equalization.
And Giovanna, I believe that would be between 80 and 90 million, just to take 60 million in impact aid credits, so that'd be close to accurate.
That's correct. So that's a piece of the ruling. Additionally, we brought forward the case of Yasi Martinez. So in impact aid legislation, which is under 34 CFR, 222 is essentially the item to look under. When you look at that, there's a specified subpart to that. And within that subpart, it basically states that if a state has been found to have violated the law, which Yasi Martinez clearly stated the state had violated the state's constitution for a uniform and sufficient educational system, and if that case currently has kind of taken away the system of aid that was in place, then the district is not eligible to apply. And so what came back in the impact aid ruling is they essentially said, we're not going to take this issue up because the state has already been proved that they are not equalized. However, in order to apply in the future, the state is going to have to provide a legal opinion stating that they meet the criteria to apply, which means they are not in violation of the state's constitution, and that they have a state aid system in place that is not in violation of the constitution. So that piece, while it wasn't specifically ruled on in this specific ruling, still holds weight for anything that we do moving forward. Additionally, we did ask for a review of the methodology of calculation. This was something that was actually brought forward in the 1998 Supreme Court case. And I'm not going to try to get too far in the weeds on this, but essentially they said, because the law is ambiguous as to what formula should be used, the cognizant oversight agency has the authority to say whether or not the formula is correct, which is essentially the Secretary of Education. Our thought process on this is essentially the Secretary of Education has changed over time, and so we had asked for a review of that. This essentially said, this is not the place for that. If you would like, you can ask for that separately, directly to the Secretary of Education. So that is something also that we can choose to review at another time. So kind of what I'm trying to bring forward is this is a multi-part issue that is just not about the state fixing one or two things. It would be a substantial overhaul to the entire system.
So, Mr. Long, thank you. Giovanna, if, I know at this point we have Yasi Martinez, that the state is trying to say they fulfilled all their requirements or judgment by the judge. We're trying to get it dismissed. And I know that we have several different entities that are fighting that dismissal. But if they, if for some reason it does, so would that open the door for them to say, we have fulfilled that requirement, and we're no longer have that black eye or whatever against us? So now we can continue to get the funding?
Mr. Long, members of the board, Member Manulito. The long story short is that is just one piece of a multi-part formula that they would have to come, that they would kind of have to bring forward in order to resolve these issues. That would be one piece. And essentially, that's kind of a gateway piece. And what this ruling actually said was, in order for the state to apply for equalization, they have to provide a state legal opinion that they are eligible to apply. And that's just step one. And then step two is actually providing a calculation or a computation within the new parameters that they are equalized. And part of that would be step three, that they would actually have to take credit for the two-mil levy statewide, which is $118 million, as well as equalizing other state aid formulas that they've put forward, which includes instructional materials, transportation, dual credit. I basically have about a page worth of funds that were not being included in the original calculation that should have been included. So there is a window of 60 days that this decision can be appealed. In order to appeal whomever, which is either the state or an affected district, they would actually have to bring forward a fact of law or a specific issue that they have with this ruling in order to request a hearing, which is what the district did. We actually did do a full computation of the application that the state had done. We took that and we did it with all the new parameters that we had proposed, and that was what was submitted when we requested our hearing. And so for anyone else to come forward and request a hearing, they would also have to do the same, which is two pieces, either a fact of law that they believe is flawed or the actual computation of where they believe it's incorrect.
If I could add to that, the data that they submitted for next year to try to take impact aid is the same data they submitted that we just won against as far as proving that it wasn't the correct data. So their success rate for next year, given what we already know, is zero to none. You can find somewhere between that. And just want to mention a couple of things. We believe this is the first time in New Mexico history that a district has been able, or districts have been able to challenge and win at the federal level. It may also be the first time in United States history of the states that take impact aid. So this is a historic win for our students, who are the ones that will benefit. If I could also add a couple of things regarding what we're starting to hear in response to state, some state people hearing, being asked by reporters about this win. They first state typically how this will hurt New Mexico students. I find that troubling in that there has never been an acknowledgement of how many years or decades our students have been hurt by the improper submission of data to the feds. This wasn't the first year that they improperly submitted data, did not follow their own laws, et cetera. And so our message has been, how unfortunate this is. While this is a win for our students, how many hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars, have been taken from students when it shouldn't have in the first place? That should be what comes out of our state employees and legislators' mouths for those that are worried about this. I understand being worried about funding. I get that in the times that we're in right now. But there should be some acknowledgement that we messed up and we hurt these students, and we gave advantages to other students over specifically Native American students and military students, and even some communities with low-income housing. And some of those funds go to those districts also. And then just to reemphasize what Giovanna said, is that the formula, the system, is disequalized. How many times have we been in Santa Fe and over, repeated over and over, some legislators tout how equalized our system is? While we have worked hard to fight against that, and we have gained a lot of momentum in helping people understand that it's not equalized, this ruling really helps in sending that message that we have problems in New Mexico. We are, all of our kids are not being treated fairly or equitably. And I just want to thanks, give thanks to the board too, before we have more questions, just because we, we as administrators, as those who we've partnered with, as those tribal entities and others that we've partnered with to fight this fight, it couldn't be done without the support of our board and their board and other people to allow us the time to get to the point where we're at right now. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, go ahead, Giovanna.
The last thing briefly that I was going to add on is that you do have to consider that the district is still pending a decision in the Zuni capital lawsuit that is still pending in district court. So that will be the kind of third decision on the items that we've brought forward as far as inequities that we see in funding, especially those that have negatively impacted our predominantly Native American students.
And if I could throw on top of that, although there is not a specific impact aid lawsuit, I think it could be extremely concerning to the public if, for some reason, people were purposefully submitting improper data to the federal government. If that was happening, there may be grounds for restitution and also a discrimination case against the state. While that has not been done, nothing has been filed, I think everybody needs to be really careful in this situation across New Mexico and how we proceed forward. Because I am hard-pressed, it's kind of unfathomable for me to understand so many smart people at the state level who very clearly submitted data that did not fit the own laws that were in place, nor fit the federal regulations. And so although it took us a little bit of digging to figure that out, those people are experts in finance, and they know what they're submitting. So it could have been by omission or commission, we don't know. I sure hope it wasn't done on purpose, because that could be, that would be quite disgusting.
Mr. Long, thank you, Giovanna and Mr. Hyatt for that. A couple of things I wanted to ask. So the first one is, will the state, is there any indication that the state is leaning towards appealing this ruling? Is my first question. My second one is, is this going to be a challenge that we're going to be doing this, a challenge in the state year to year, every year to fight for our impact aid money? And my last question is what Mr. Hyatt just kind of touched up on. Retrocede the amounts that our children have been, our children's funds have been stolen by the state of New Mexico. And is there any indication, I know it's in the billions of dollars, and I think when we talked with legislators, when we were testifying, we were asking them to please fix this during that session. We need you guys to fix this. And I know there were some ears that were open, and then some ears that fell on deaf ears. So I don't have any pity on them right now due to, no one had pity on our kids. No one had pity on them when we're trying to scrape by with the money that we receive for, you know, thousands of, you know, over 11,000 kids that we have here. And we want them to be receiving what other school districts and other areas receive. And they haven't, they haven't, for years, even when I was in school. And I think that so, for us to have any sympathy on them, I don't. And I think we need to get that as much as our children's money back to improve their education. I mean, we're even struggling right now with computers, laptops. We don't have that for our children. But yet, the bigger school district get the huge amount of thousands of laptops for their children. And that's not right. We've been going through this for years, and it needs to stop. So I really would like to continue, so those are my first three questions, but to continue to fight this battle as long as we serve here on the board, to continue to get that money for our children, so.
I'll start by answering, and then Giovanna can pick up the pieces. One of the things that we heard, several of you were there, or heard about it at least at the last Mexico School Board Association conference, that the governor stood up and said that impact aid, the system was unfair. She also said that all the legislators knew it. So I would hope not, out of respect to our communities, that they went to appeal this very clear decision. The federal government didn't take a day to figure this out from the data that we submitted and showing that the state was wrong. They took almost six months, and I assume legal experts reviewing their decision. This is unheard of in our country, that districts would challenge the federal government and we would win. Never happened before that we're aware of. And so the federal government did not take this lightly. They analyzed it very thoroughly. And so we would hope that the governor, the Public Education Department, would not appeal it. That would contradict the governor's words. And so we know that she wanted to resolve this issue this last session. It did not happen. It obviously takes a legislative body to also resolve the issue. But yes, to your second question, they can submit data each year to try to take money from us. We would hope that would stop, given this decision. But they're still allowed to do so. We'll have to challenge every single year that they submit their data. And now that we're on to them, I think that, and they realize that, what's going on per this decision, I think that they should think twice about keeping this practice of discriminating against our students. That would be inappropriate. As far as restitution, it would probably take a lawsuit to get restitution. They're not going to just cough up hundreds, if not billions, of dollars that they may or may not have to give to our districts. And it was, there is some onus on us that we have to challenge it each year. And so those years, while there were a few challenges, there was not a challenge that won in the past. And so there is some responsibility on our end for not figuring out sooner what they were trying to do. Again, it's a complicated system. It took a while to figure this out, so I'll leave that with you also.
Giovanna?
Sure, Mr. Long, members of the board, Ms. Manulito. You know, I often come in front of you with statistics and facts and laws and all of those things, because that's really where the rubber meets the road. I am overwhelmingly saddened by what's happened here for decades. And I hope, I truly hope, that we do not get the same type of response that we got when we went to the legislature. While there were many people who were responsive to us, our local legislators, as well as some others, there were many who just flat-out looked at us in the face and said, sue us, because it's not going to change. This is not the road that we wanted to take, but this is the road it has taken to get someone to listen to us. And these are not perceived disparities, these are reality disparities. As Superintendent Hyatt mentioned, these other districts were able to use the interest payments that they received off of money in the bank in order to buy computers for their students. Because they had so much money, they earned interest on money in the bank. It's unfathomable to many of us who have lived and breathed this for years as to where we are now. And as much as I don't want this to be an emotional argument, it is emotional. It is emotional for me and for you and for all of our parents and our students and our community members who see the disparity. So even though this is something we will have to do every year, for as long as I'm here, it will be done. And I know for as long as Superintendent Hyatt's here, it will be done. And I'm sure as long as many of you are here, it will be done. I don't care how long it takes, it has to be fixed.
Kevin?
You know, I just wanted to say a big thank you to our superintendent administration and Giovanna especially. You know, thank you guys so much for doing all the footwork to provide the federal government with all the information they need, they needed to be able to find out, you know, that this was actually wrong, what was happening. Thank you, guys.
And Member Mitchell, if I may respond to that, you have to remember that, you know, all this information is not readily available, which is just another layer of difficulty. We don't have information right now. If you look at the statistical books that are available for review, the last ones that were updated were the estimated numbers for 1819. We don't have any actual numbers. They've already filed another request. We don't have access to that data. We have to request access to that data in order to actually receive it. We have to request access to that data in order to actually receive it. And so it's, it's... For anyone who wonders how long it took us to be able to do this, it took a lot of public information requests even to get the data that we were seeking because it was not openly provided to us.
Mr. Long?
Priscilla?
Should I just, I just really wanna say thank you. I mean, I know it's been a tough battle. I know we heard from our legislators here a few board meetings ago that they all did a presentation. And, you know, we had Representative Alcone here that, you know, everybody says he started this many, many years ago. And we have individuals that have been fighting this battle for years and decades. And, you know, I think just one positive, positive outcome during this horrible time of the pandemic sure made a lot of people happy. And I think that's where, it's very emotional, you're right, it's very emotional even for me because I, we see it. We live and it's day and night sometimes to see driving from this school district into Albuquerque or into Phoenix or into even Winter Rock, you know what I mean? They have the complexes and the fields and the wonderful computer labs and culture rooms and special education. And, you know, I mean, those are some of the things that we cannot afford. And I think to everybody that advocated, our legislators, you know, bless them. Bless you guys tenfold for fighting for our children. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Priscilla? Is that it, Jovana?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I also want to say thank you for all those involved, our attorneys too, that's been helping us. Way back, I don't want to make myself like I'm very old, but way back when I was a young leader, this is one of the issues that we fought for. The other one was that for many years, Navajo chapters in New Mexico, we couldn't get state funding because there was always a legal opinion issued by the New Mexico State Attorney General, always bringing up the anti-donation clause in the state's constitution. We've been fighting against that. And I think at the time, like, impact aid, the school district itself, you know, I don't think the superintendent at the time and the administration at the time really took interest in helping us work on the impact aid. And I'm glad we do have a good superintendent, really appreciate that, and the assistant superintendents. And right now, you know, I see the state, they're put in a position where they can't really maneuver. That's the way I say it, I guess, to put it plainly, we got them by the ying yang. So that's all I wanted to say. And with that, let's go down to the next item, please. Notice, member, May eleventh, we'll have another board meeting. It'll be here at one o'clock. Let's go down to new business A. Mike?
President Long, members of the board, Jovana?
President Long, members of the board, members of the audience. This permanent cash transfer is being requested in order to move the funds that we had in the teacher revenue debt service back into the operational account. Typically, this is something I come before you to go the opposite direction, where we're actually taking our impact aid funds and putting it into the teachage debt service. Now, due to the legislative appropriations that we were actually able to receive in the prior legislative session, we were able to pay off the remainder of our debt, and this is the balance that's left that we're actually able, through the cost savings of working with our capital outlet group and also defeating those bonds early, this is the amount that we're gonna be able to move back into our operational account from impact aid funds. So I do ask that you allow me to do that through a permanent cash transfer in order to be sure that we're able to get these back into the educational hands of our students.
Or members, questions? So what is the pleasure of the board?
Jovana, just for clarification, it's this form?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Long, I would like to motion to approve this permanent cash transfer request that Ms. Hainke has provided us. Approval of the permanent cash transfer as listed on the New Mexico PED form, nine nine four cash transfer request.
Okay, motion's been made by Priscilla Manuelito to approve new business A, second by Michael Shaw, Rokal Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Jovana. Oh, thank you, board members.
Mr. Long, I know we already did the approval of the agenda, but I just wanted to request if we could do a quick moment of silence for some of the people in our community that we have lost at this time, sir, if that, if we're able to do that.
Agoshin. Moment of silence, yeah, we lost a lot of community members, various places because of COVID-19. Agoshin. Yeah. Thank you for that recommendation, Priscilla. We go down to item seven, and before I ask for a motion to go into executive session, I want to recognize Terry. You know, I've been wanting to do this, I guess, before COVID-19, and now I guess we have to, we have to wait until, I don't want to wait that long, so I want to tell board members that Terry is now, she's taken the place of Carmen. So congratulations, Terry. You're legit a member. Taking care of Johnson O'Malley and federal programs, I guess. So thank you. Board members?
I would like to make a motion. We move into executive session.
Okay, Michael Shaw, motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Kevin Mitchell, seconds. Rokal Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Two twenty-three.
Two twenty-three. We are going into executive session.
I have one that I had purchased that is a tie.
(Audio cut off) (Audio cut off)
Well, good, I'm glad you guys took some.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn to regular meeting.
Okay, to come out of executive session? Okay, motion's been made by Michael Shaw to come out of executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Mitchell, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Um, Mr. Long, can, can, can we just read this, this part? That we're supposed to read?
After we come back, after we come back.
After I can read it.
Okay, okay. Yes?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. We're out of executive session.
Two fifty. You report now, report what you... Just this reading right here.
Goshin. The report, we were in executive session to talk about the evaluation of our superintendent. And we got the materials that we will be reviewing. Uh, that is all we're gonna be doing. We will determine the date when the evaluation will actually be done. No action was taken.
Mr. Long, I'd like to motion to adjourn, please.
Goshin, motion made by Priscilla Manuelito to adjourn, second, anybody?
Second.
Second by Michael Shaw, roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Two fifty-one.
Two fifty-one, we're adjourned, board members, a chat, safe trip home. Joan de Nocca.